You know, I went to, I had got some buddies down in Austin and I had a meeting down there. And then we went out, and those three guys, they're always all a bunch of young kids, we call them. And we all went out to eat, and there was two of them that just got engaged. And there were two more that just got married last, you know, the last month or two. And we were sitting around, and we were eating, and they got talking. And they said, "Well, when we get married, we're gonna do this, that." And we just looked at, we just all went to laugh at it, and I said, "Well," I said, "You'll figure it out." "You'll figure it out." "It's not gonna be quite like it."
No, no.
I'll cut your live there.
All right.
How you doing, sir?
Doing all right, man. You doing okay?
Good.
Got a little nibble there.
Huh?
Got a little nibble there.
You bet.
Don't have Martin cookies, you gotta eat them.
Well, my wife did over the weekend, made Christmas cookies.
Mmm.
That's deadly.
It is, isn't it? They're pretty good anyway, but they start putting all that icing on there, that just kind of...
That just helps them go down.
Yeah, I start, like...
Did you grab?
All those shrooms up, lube, and I was hoping we'd get some rain to push. Because that was our four hands, they got underneath there and pulled. It's just one big round of ants. I'm hoping maybe we'll just get rain Thursday.
Yeah. So we got rain this weekend?
I don't think I did what I wanted to do, but it felt like I wanted to. I wanted the rain to come in and push that back down. If not, we might have to get the bogged out there to straighten up and put more dirt in.
All right.
It's got, I mean, their roots are... They're still, they've still got some roots set up, gotta try to get out of there. Gotta kind of run their way in, plant rocks and concrete. So, anyway, there's, it's not anything, none of those buildings are gonna be used until they have, or if somebody's... There's just, there's just like a big pile of, there's like a, kind of like a mound, a small mound of dirt going up the sidewalk, so...
All running, skeleton, everybody says they're vacationing after now.
Right. No, it's, I mean, it's not anything, it's, I mean, if it rains, and it settles the sun, but... What I worry about is, you know, that shit will come up later, and it'll be a problem at all.
I was hoping the Mitchells were at the, uh, the rain.
A lot of people, I know of...
Heck yeah.
Because we were going through the script, and it was actually Rick's turn to write the script, not not all that.
Heck yeah.
Everybody gets nervous about, um, you know, we got, uh, we started with, uh, here, break, can we shoot? Everybody gets nervous about what I like, because that won't cause mass chaos, I think.
Yeah, because people are nuts now.
And I said, "Well, I think people probably know where to follow, but there might be a gun shot here or there, so..."
Yeah. You gotta hear the little brother say the national anthem, and y'all shot it off. He was, you could hear, nobody expects it, nobody expects it.
Scared the heck out of me. Is that man been doing all right? Didn't see you this morning.
How are you?
I'm good.
How are you? I heard you trying to convince, you know, I'm just real convincing this morning. What's up with you?
I already did me a hard time.
Mark gives everybody a hard time.
Not Mark, y'all were giving me hard times, he does not.
I'm not gonna bother her.
If you didn't put a bell around Mark's neck, you wouldn't even know he was there, would you?
I slept right in.
He did.
Everybody was talking, and my phone was about to go off, I was afraid, I forgot to turn it to vibration.
Uh-oh, well, I haven't done one yet.
Well, mine was making all kinds of noise, and Don don't need it, it's not in the right spot. He was, hey.
I gave you cash.
Like me, nobody's gonna listen. I'm tired of listening. Yeah, he just wanted to find out.
I haven't any of you to figure out.
Um, I heard here, I looked down, and I had a little...
People were, people were, I was, from out here.
It's all, it was a picture or something, and it said, "I need part of your memory."
I was like, "How did you not hear about this?"
I don't even know the response to it.
They got like, too much of shares, so it was probably for a high fee, they're bringing out.
You know how I do, all day long.
I just turned it off.
Turned my phone off, took my hat off.
They don't have vibration.
Respectable.
Fuck their view.
All righty. Seems like the rest of them, huh?
Few of them.
Seems like the others.
Now that I have them, yeah. Everything turned out all right? Do our magic.
I'm sure you're doing okay.
Yes, sir.
I was thinking about me yesterday, I appreciate that.
I didn't, there's no place for me to sign on these, where... Am I missing a page? There it is, I didn't turn the page for it.
One is there.
Oh, good. I'm living for these individuals here. Make sure there's plenty of witnesses I've never seen.
Get Mitch started.
How you doing?
Good, you all right?
Good, good, good. Geographic overview of PDA expenditures.
You might get a bunch of that junk.
Probably was once, you know, thirty-fourty-five years ago.
You're a girl.
Always.
I need one of those too.
My circle lines, I know what.
All oxygen in there, it's getting mixed markets.
I just heard fifty, I think I did. I'm getting old.
I don't know if mine.
No, I don't know if mine.
Oh, I missed you.
You're correct.
Thank you for the games that you...
Oh, yeah? I ain't gonna say, I'm gonna smack you in the head.
What'd you say? No, it's pictures.
Something about...
That he wants a ribbon. He didn't say even thank you, he wants a ribbon.
Shirley's only been thirty-six, thirty-seven.
Yeah, yeah, thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine.
Thanks for the game last week, or something, it all worked that great.
I'm glad, I missed you today.
Well, you got three or four hits, we're confused, so you didn't...
Yeah. And I wonder if Claire...
Yep, and there Jason is, being an accountant, he's all cross teeths.
He's supposed to call today and find out when they're gonna start shooting.
College, he's a day well footed, well, we've already talked about that.
Huh?
You don't need to read it, or...
I'll let you do it, sorry.
I'm gonna work it later. Okay. You ain't gonna like it. Get in line.
Hey, Tabitha.
Jim sent some Mr. Cook to meet you today, Jim's here to bring a letter from my hand up.
There you go.
A letter from Mr. Cook that Cook, St. Barbara. Here from Fort Belknap, end of it. We discussed it last time, on the extension side.
Your first mind, what?
I hope that not.
Difficult anchor, twenty, you can remember it.
Yeah. Like he was in, Jim was getting calistration today? Yeah. Thanks for the newspaper for that, too. Good job.
Thank you.
Article, grow well, then. How you doing?
Not...
Feeling better?
Yeah.
Good.
We'll call this meeting to order, Young County Commissioners Court is sitting in a regular meeting, Monday, December the tenth, two thousand and eighteen. It is nine thirty-three AM. I'll make note that this meeting's been posted, published, in the manner of course, the time required, and then all members of the court are present. If it's conveniently standard or inappropriate, please, you should have a clear, quiet, and clear...
Let's pray. Father, these kind of appointed agents want to thank you, Father, for another day, Father, for your union of blessings. We thank you, Father, for the rain you sent us this last past weekend, Father. Father, we just ask if you'll be with us today in court, I pray, Father, for your guidance and direction and your wisdom, and all matters at your hands, Father. Father, we pray that you be with those that are out and about, Father, and just pray your hand be upon them, keep them protected, day. Bless each family represented here today, Father. And, Father, we just, uh, let us not forget the reason for the season, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On my Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
God, number three, public comments, announcements, presentations, low access items here, but I understand that we have letters from Mr. Michael Cook with Agralife. And Jim Hammond here to read that letter for us, with regards to the grape arborette at Fort Belknap.
Um, he, Michael Cook sends his regrets, he couldn't be here, he's actually at the Texas A&amp;M, but he sent a letter. Um, honorable commissioners, how do I apologize for not being able to address you in person? My name is Michael Cook, and I'm a viticulture program specialist for North Texas with the Texas A&amp;M Agralife Extension Service. As a grape program specialist, my primary function is to provide educational support for the hundred commercial vineyards spread throughout the fifty-five counties in North Texas, by providing workshops, programs, educational materials, and one-on-one side visits growers. I also collaborate with specialists along the state on applied research missions. I'm a Dallas native, and had the privilege of visiting the grape arbor at Fort Belknap a short time ago. The grape arbor at Fort Belknap is indeed a hidden gem, not only for North Texas, but for the entire United States. Texas is unique in that we have the largest repository of native grape species in the nation, thirteen to be exact. The grapes being grown on the arbor are the native Mustang grapes, which are common in our region. What is uncommon is that these vines have withstood the test of time, and are the oldest and largest specimens I have in county. It is fitting that such a historical vineyard be located on the grounds of Fort Belknap. After consulting with peers, it is thought that these wild Mustang grapes, many of which trunks span six feet in circumference, are most likely the largest native vine currently in existence in the United States. In addition, the size of these vines would easily compete for one of the largest across the world, this is incredibly exciting. With such a fascinating and unique story, I would hope the grape arbor at Fort Belknap, Belknap would continue to be a destination for tourist, schoolchildren, and families. Not only do the vines offer shade and a bounty of fruit, but a clear window of the past history of young county. Because these vines are indeed living, they require maintenance to preserve their form, crop load, and sustainability. It was my recommendation after examining the vines that in order to preserve the arbor for future generations, the vines will need to be heavily pruned during winter. Commercially, commercially, vines are pruned back heavily every season, and the vines at Fort Belknap are no exception. This heavy pruning will not only allow for a safe working environment during the renovation of the arbor structure, but both for the crew as well as the vine, but it's critical in maintaining the health and longevity of each vine. Furthermore, this rejuvenation will allow the vines to be trained properly along the arbor, and will encourage new healthy growth, and facilitate annual maintenance. It is my hope that as both elected officials and residents of young county, you see the unique treasure that, that is the grape arbor at Fort Belknap. The preservation of this hidden gem requires a rejuvenation of the vines and arbor structure itself. It is not only a matter of safety, but also is necessary for the vines to continue to thrive for years to come. I hope to see you out at the arbor soon, and thank you for your time, sincerely, Michael Cook.
Thank you, that's just a reiteration of what we've heard in the previous letter sent. It continues to reassure us that we're doing the right thing by cutting those vines back, so, as of January seventh, precinct ones and precinct twos, we're out there to do that. And, uh, anyone who wants to come and watch that, stand at a distance, of course, we need to keep people safe. We're gonna be hauling off a lot of grapevines off the old grape arbor, so, if you want a piece of it, they get it. Jim, thank you, uh, Jim has found himself overseeing quite another precious historical site here in Young County that we want to be preserved. That's what we're attempting to do here, believe me, it makes me nervous to come back to these old grapevines that far also, but with Mr. Cook's reassurance, here we go.
May we come on January the seventh?
Yes.
Well, another item we have on the non-action item is our VSO with an update on our veteran services, Wayne McAllen.
Thank you, Judge. Yeah, in life, I try to come in here each year and do this, and I think they're missed just in a more opportunity. I passed out the sheet there, and I highlighted, pardon me, the budget, the order, and the board pieces. And that's on the list of compensation and pension. These are two types of monies that comes to the veteran or veteran spouse dependents. As a result, it'll be the service connected disability, which is compensation, or the pension piece that the veteran has passed on, or if they are basically destitute, they can get money to help make ends meet, and currently, um, some veterans I know of it, they are getting pension, assisted living, nursing homes, something like this. But the point to think about this, that four point five million dollars per year, for about fourteen hundred deaths. The death number has remained fairly constant since FY nine, I think it was fourteen twenty-five, I looked this morning. In FY nine, the amount of compensation pension coming in was two point three million. Now, this is money that comes from the outside in the grape. It's not something we recycle internally, for our taxes and all this other stuff, you know. The Spilly District probably makes, has more money, but that's generated over the federal funds and internal funds. So this is, just to make you aware, that's, that's pretty doggone good, that's almost like, uh, two and southern bleachers income, in the fifth of the county. So, that's on that piece of it. If you look over there, some other things, medical care and all this other stuff, but medical care is not included in this. These are checks that come directly to the veteran, their dependents, or spouses. But that's pretty doggone good. Any, any questions about, of someone here?
Does the average number of dollars coming to our veterans here similar to the same ones elsewhere?
Yes, it is. Um, and the reason for that is, you know, veterans are a little bit more mobile than they used to be. And they also, particularly younger veterans, are more adept at going into the system and making changes. They have disabilities that were, uh, recorded in their service medical records, and they go on, and they pretty well adapt to it. So we can probably see this increase a little bit more.
So veterans that have here before have been not very good in accessing the benefits that were available to them?
Many of them are like World War II vets, only thing I want to do is go home.
Right.
You know, I don't want to stand in line, I don't want to sell a paperwork, and, and the veterans now understand that, uh, that they need to do that. And like I said, compensation, this one was common, that's the injuries on the job. The hardest job sometimes takes somebody's older vet, like me, and convince him, "You're not begging for that kind of thing." This is something that occurred during your employment, and it's, you're in, it's not an entitlement, because they're disabled and it's hurt, so it doesn't get you hurt.
Oh, how the world's changed.
It has.
It has, I mean, from where they're like, "I don't want free handouts to work," everybody wants a free handout.
Your dad was a classic example. You know, they, they did your job, they came home, they went to work. Now, the thing about it too, VA has been a little bit better about addressing these things, starting back with Vietnam, and then we were playing for Agent Orange and stuff like this. And as the older vets are seeing the younger vets taking advantage of what's available to them. And they say, "Oh, well, I've been here to, I've been collecting three hundred dollars a month for the last twelve years." Okay, maybe that's something else. And some of the older vets, one gentleman up in the south of Palm Springs, I think he was getting like two hundred and fifty dollars a month, I can't remember, whatever, whatever, for something that happened when he was in Japan in the nineteen fifties. And we filed paperwork, and now it's at three hundred dollars, you get about thirty-two hundred dollars a month, for the same disabilities that has worsened over time. Carrying loss is a classic example. Uh, peripheral neuropathy associated with Agent Orange exposure, another passive example, because it will be worse.
Finally, are they, are they monthly figures or annual?
It's annual fees, Judge, yes.
Bring it up. Great job.
Okay.
Would you ask that definitely?
Well, one other point, if you would please, I would like the Commissioners Court to start a search for my replacement.
You can't do that, you guys, thank you.
He's not in duty. Uh, the only deal on the judge is, I've held this job longer than I've ever had one specific job in my seventy years. Even when I was in the military, I was in there seven years, I had four or five different jobs. GTB, I was there nineteen years, I had four different jobs, and one of them, I had three different product lines, so it's completely different. And, uh...
Just time for a change.
So maybe you're going somewhere else in the veterans' industry?
No, sir. Uh-uh, no. I ain't about to touch that. I don't retire. As somebody asked me if I was using this at one time for other things, uh-uh, I'm using this to spend a little more time at the house, because, "Honey, and Christmas, honey, and seventy years old, that honeydew list does not take care of itself."
And that honeydew list...
Now, please.
It'll be incumbent on you then to, um, review all of those that are eligible here, having written this recommendation.
I, I would be more than glad to help with that, Judge, and secondarily, this...
And you'll have to try.
You can throw it out, I didn't hear, I didn't hear a thing, I gave him my talking point. Here, here's, here's my plan on this whole deal, I'd like to retire, not later than thirty-first March next year, if the Commissioners Court can get time. Also, if a person is found and approved earlier, I have no problem of stepping aside early. But just as you mentioned, Judge, uh, when Mr. Swepton was in, in the position, due to health conditions, he passed away without somebody being trained.
That's true.
Uh, Mr. Rankin, the exact same thing, Mr. Rankin had to come in and start from scratch, due to health conditions, the exact same thing happened to him. And as far as I know, I only got two fatal issues right now, one is old age, which we all will face, and the other, smart mouth of my life, which is two colors. Remember to take care of yourself.
The other thing that that happens on.
You know, I'm not as fast getting away as I used to.
You know it's wise.
But yes, I would like to take it and make sure that the person that tells, like, knows what little system I put in there in the office for things, or how to get things done. Because when y'all hired me in September tenth, that was the very same date that the trains started down in Texas, I spent six months here. The only thing I have a phone number in Fort Worth, I don't want the next person to have to do that, nor do I want veterans to have to experience that either. I spent, like I said, a little rate and a half years doing this, and I probably, no, I probably, it is, the most rewarding job I've ever had. Probably with except flying helicopters, I would say. And thanks, uh, make sure that one veteran, or their family members, reach your hand over to this and say, "You changed my life."
Can I call you today for me? Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
You're doing a good job, thank you. And we're gonna keep doing it as long as, we can keep doing it.
And I'll help as long as I can make sure that things are viewed right, if I, I'm not employed anymore.
Well, another item on the public comments and announcements, portion of our agenda is tackling safety. is tactical safety survey in November, or thankfully that veterans, in fact, didn't include the whole, whole package, just, I guess you could say, the, you know, the different contact information letter where they had accomplished that, and they gave their accolades to all those people here in the county that had assisted them in the effort that they went through to do their safety audits. And then, excuse me?
You want me to have a copy of the letter?
It says it's Cheryl Robinson.
Oh, okay. I'll do that.
We'll announce that we talked around, done some discussing and asking and scheduling with all of the electorations, nearly all of them anyway. Judge Robert Dahl will be performing the swearing-in ceremony, and we've got that scheduled for eleven AM on December the thirty-first, Monday. What?
I think Robert Dahl's been there.
Nope. Well, they didn't tell me.
It was on Thursday before. You can call me. But I think we sit and just kind of...
I just talked to him this morning, he's saying about it.
Well, maybe. Somebody will swear in.
Yeah, we've got the swearing ceremony set for eleven AM on Monday, December the thirty-first. And contact, I think I've heard from all, or nearly all of the parties, that would be, we'll have to check when we move in, get the schedule. Or we're gonna maintain that time date anyway.
Sounds good.
Is there anything else that needs to be announced? Anybody else, anybody out there?
He's gonna do the swearing-in, you can call him, be the emergency manager.
Uh, no, yeah, I'm talking about that. Yeah. All right, we're good. Okay, Robert Dahl agreed to be the official swearing. That'll be one of his, I'll pick the last, I guess. Might not be the last one, but it'll be about the last one. If nothing else, we'll move the item numbers over. Consider county clerk's minutes from previous meeting, November twentieth and twenty-sixth and December sixth. Have you looked over those? Are there any conditions, delays, or corrections that need to be made?
So what? And all three?
And all three?
And all three.
Got a motion by Commissioner Wiley and a second by Commissioner Rogers, please go. Except that all three meeting minutes as presented, all in favor? Five oh. Item number five, consider treasury financial quarters, takes on pledges.
Yep, I have September and October balanced. I'm new reports, you can see the activity after the end of the month, when it says account receivable on the combined statement of cash receipts and disbursements. That's the activity that took, you know, it used to be we kind of opened until we got everything done, but these are the monies that came in after the end of September. But they're all balanced, we still have money. And we have the money coming in from taxes, we're starting to flow in, so.
I guess there are, but you can start pretty slow and increase.
Well, we get one big chunk in, in December, when all of the banks pay, or the loans pay the taxes, and then it starts really coming in in January, so we, we're doing good. We haven't had to stress that too much. We do have a big month three that Cheryl will tell you about, but we still have enough money in there to cover it.
We're still rolling, federal checking.
Yes.
I noticed in the Sierra Bank there, it's like they've got excess players that are in that league. We should move on all of those. Okay, that's fruit.
I'll say.
Sorry, I didn't get that.
Be fruit.
Fruit by the motion.
Have a motion to approve the financial quarter as presented and the security pledges. And including acknowledgement of the hotel occupancy fee, all in favor?
You know what the balance is in that hotel occupancy?
Pardon?
You know what the balance is in hotel occupancy?
No, this one actually is the first one of the fiscal year, so that's what we have, is five thousand. But as far as last year, I don't have to have a week.
No, I was, I was first, and then Jimmy said.
Wow. You gotta ask the advance.
Yeah, but we're, we're actually doing that on a calendar year, January, January.
Okay, well, as far as the budget shows, it would only be in that line for...
I'm not the...
Thirty, thirty-four thousand. Do you think it's almost forty?
It's been in January, and budgeted in October, but budgeted forty-eighteen.
Item number six, consider all of first budget minimums, balance table.
Yeah, I should plan a lot. I don't think, follow where, I paid a lot, no, I paid a lot of the big bills, since we had no money in the bank, but I paid the road fire department, there's twenty-five thousand, this is a probation, I gave them fifty, which is a portion, and our net data maintenance is a hundred and sixty-six thousand, a hundred and ten. So the total that I'm about to run is seven hundred twelve thousand, five hundred and sixty-two dollars and thirty-nine cents.
Five hundred sixty.
Two, thirty-nine. You got the seven twelve.
Yeah.
Out of the, you know...
That's part of that, that's what's at that point.
Now, just...
Change.
So out of the general is three hundred and eighty-two thousand, seven forty-six, thirty-four. Also paid for another grader out of that, which is two hundred and seventy thousand.
How many is that? Two hundred and what?
Three hundred eighty-two thousand, seven forty-six, thirty-four.
Make the most first class.
And there is a Don's group that you can sign in here.
I'll say that. Roger's.
I did, it's been there, thank you.
Second assignment.
Speed it all.
To approve voucher table as presented by Young County Alimenters. All in favor? Five, four, no votes, one not voting, correct?
The number of...
Four zero one.
Four zero one. Commissioner, any votes?
Mr. Wiley and Stank, no.
Oh, okay.
Commissioner Rogers made the motion?
Rogers, yes.
Side second.
I can't speak up, I can't.
I'm gonna turn that though.
You're walking the line this morning.
Also, as you mentioned, that on the seized horses, we had one vet bill for a little over fifteen hundred dollars that we paid, and I have another one now for a little over fifteen, plus I'll probably have some more for hauling, and we got the check the other day, it was two thousand forty-five dollars for selling the night.
A little short.
We're gonna be a little short, and I mentioned it to the sheriff this morning while we got it. And we're, and we're paying for it out of his budget, so...
That's a collectible deficiency?
Should be.
Yeah.
At ten dollars a month for the night.
That's a benefit. That's been dotted a minute for Susan.
I don't know.
Hold that person to the right.
I paid for the ten dollars.
We'll see. We'll see if Rob again comes out of them.
Oh, okay, I guess Ann has that.
What's that?
Request.
Oh, yes.
You got those.
Got a request for from Susan Smith and James Hayes, for a person, so, just go to the commission again, one three hundred twenty-two dollars, twenty-four cents, eleven dollars ninety-eight cents. I think the proportion of that is for supplies, tools to claim headstones at the balance area.
They have fourteen thousand five hundred dollars.
So will they look forward to moving there?
So what?
Motion by Commissioner Wiley, second by Commissioner Rogers, to approve reimbursement expenses to Susan Smith and James Hayes, as requested, all in favor? Period.
Is it ten o'clock yet?
Yep.
Yep.
I believe it's ten o'clock. We have moved item number fourteen, type of specific, open sale bids, rubber materials, culverts, tires, few, few.
I did receive some bids. Let's just start with the rubber materials. First bid on that is from Zach Burke Company. And I'm trying to make y'all copies of it, okay? And then I have a bid from Ingram Concrete also.
That's kind of good, Zach Burke.
Yeah, it kind of goes along with...
Like every other.
Yes. I'll get y'all copies of those. I have a bid from Wilson Culverts.
Can we get a copy?
I did not, I sent to, I sent my wife's text, and I didn't get, versus phone text, but I didn't get anything from her text. Here's the one from Wilson, who made copies, y'all look at it, pass it around.
That's Culverts.
That's all Culverts. So we got two on rubber materials, one on Culverts.
We didn't give pricing.
I didn't, no, I didn't last year, they're...
Did that go to, did it go to...
I called him, and he told me that it didn't, so I think it would have done that for us.
Yeah.
Were there, many enough?
Also got a packet from Southern Tire. Just like Christmas. There are five, five board members, and they did wind that out, so they just, yeah, I'll take that, take one down, pass it around, and that's all the bids I received on anything.
There's some bids on parade.
Thank you.
I think they keep yours.
She gave me one. She had Burke in.
I did.
Did it use?
It's gone, gone hard.
I'm looking for the same, Burke with the...
There you go, lady.
There it is. You're getting some?
So where's this? It's just bad getting the final December payment. Hotel occupancy until the first of February, right?
So they usually bring them down rather ahead than...
We started this January first of this year, and we need to get the first...
Elkhart is, I'm gonna have a few more, so...
Where's Elkhart?
Elkhart, the south, I believe.
Twenty-five hundred dollars worth of culverts from Wilson will be delivered, twenty-five hundred dollars.
I don't think that's, I mean, I have to go pull, but I don't know, that's in January. January, February, March, so, yeah, we don't get it until after the...
Thank you, ma'am.
Do you have any questions?
What does it, what does that was?
Yeah.
Yeah, Elkhart, not very far from Palestine. Not very far from Palestine.
Is it fair play?
Yeah.
About a forty-five?
About two hundred and three miles from us.
I bet they charge a lot. I don't know if they will have a different, another yard somewhere closer to you?
It may have, but I don't know, but that's where it is. He talked a lot when we seen him down there, that they was gonna blow the truck up and make, make deliveries to certain places.
Yeah.
But there's a number, a figure that you had to order to get.
Tell me twenty-five hundred dollars.
So, I don't have a problem with that.
For free trade?
Free trade, free trade.
That's what I was... Hey, Mark, do y'all have any of that red gravel anywhere, at any of your pits?
Not really. There's a little bit at Newcastle, pretty dirty. All right, I mean, we got some to wash and clean, but are you talking more of rubber material?
Where's that called?
It's on, on that red, red dirt on the, on the road.
Cleats?
River gravel.
That's why I was saying river gravel.
No, it's just native, native, plain river gravel, down on the riverbank. They're bigger, something like that at Newcastle.
Is there one? If you're trying to match your, for one person, yes.
Ah, yeah, that probably. Maybe about ten of them. You got a lot of ability to get them, but just, that's the meaning, so, I was in there, it's actually long. Real spotty, a little more economical than, all the way to the... I bet you don't wanna talk about it either.
One question for you, Mark, just to sort of just to curious, a question, what's the difference in mix or size between the commercial flex base and state base?
Tech stop bases, about two each minus product, commercial each and a half.
Both by mix of fines and all?
About, about the same. Tech stop base, we're often keeping a little more fines in it due to some of the specifications. We're actually currently, if somebody needed some bigger material, we're selling some of our tech stop base as commercial at the leach, currently, just because we're a little overstocked. Most of our counties are not, not likely because of the bigger material, they only buy the each and a half, but we, we have made that offer to sell to our customers.
State base, two?
Sir?
Two inches, you say?
Yes, two inches. Yes, or two inches.
Now, tires get thingy like, they can't tell them.
Really, really not designed for an open top road, you know. We got some wind farms that are using it currently, you know, but like I say, most everybody, if we give them the option, they like the smaller material.
If you got a road though that eats the rock, it's a good sized road.
Yeah, if you got a sandy road, it's.
Yeah. Yep. Works well.
Tell somebody where their tires is. Oh, yeah. My tire. I'll make the motion on Zach Burkett and Ingram to accept, let's say, oh, Ingram's my. About the same. Either, either? They're the same people. I'll shake a deck.
Make that.
You all, you all crushed over there too?
Yes, sir. I'm involved in that operation. Get the material bid from Ingram and Zach Burkett.
All we do is custom process and farm the made use market. But we are amenable, but Matt doing that, not a problem. We thought that already mattered, actually. We're, we're amenable to doing that. Second by Wiley.
Yes.
To accept, um, both bidders on road material, um, from Zach Burkett Company as amenable to this. Got a break?
Yes, sir.
You on a favor?
Uh, fine.
I make a motion, we take, uh, Wilson, for a culvert type carrier. Because that's the only bone, the only bid we got.
Wiley moves, you want to add a second?
I'll say your pick.
The five seconds to motion.
One thing you can do with this is we can communicate between the four precincts and we can.
Get a, get a truckload and.
Load up it, we just dip it up in inventory where our proper sizes are. And ideally, we can transfer back forth to each other with the.
Help them with mine.
Yeah.
That's actually the sole vehicle we have on Culvers. Timmy. Timmy.
Uh, except Wilson, you need.
I haven't made copies since.
I've got Wilson. She's made a copy of it now.
Yeah, Wilson.
As a southern tire, you need the southern tire.
I just, I think we just need to recognize southern tires as a buy board supplier. As long as we buy at buy board prices, I think we're good on tires. Think they're for someone to bid?
Second, Wiley. To utilize buy board, what I say prices, our retired dues.
Yes, sir.
All in favor? Your five oh, pick that up, sheriff.
Yes, but I have a copy of the bid.
Okay, well, there is, but it's not really a bid.
Oh, I got Wilson about.
Oh, you did, was that?
Yeah.
Okay. So just a.
Or a recognition.
Yeah, there's a letter that's.
Thank you. I'll snuck a copy of that from you.
Surely, there's a letter from, uh, that says about, I don't know what they did with it.
Thank you.
Stacy, Stacy here.
All right, one. Fuel, no fuel, solid. We have a procedure, bid on the fuel and.
I'd like to move that we go ahead and continue our pricing today for teachers, been in place several years.
Okay, that's, uh, that's an alternative of things of.
Of high and low price fuel.
Besting pricing for the day. Okay, that's complete. The motion's gonna be that. Second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Crute. To continue our competitive pricing program, uh, as best price of the day for fuel purchases. All in favor? Going at four zero one. Four zero one.
Is that where it's at?
Yes.
We haven't had any issues at all, especially we know y'all have them coming, we keep our.
Good, I think they're all of our feet. Back to our order. Item number seven, the select board RFQ, and select engineer for our loving water supply project, Joe Cox here, to give us a little presentation, I believe the committee may have, uh.
I suppose they might be.
And, uh, I've viewed those, we've got two engineering qualifications back, set of qualifications and, you know, I've, I've looked at it like, both of them will qualify, I would claim that they were for one of the, one of them has been a little superior qualified under circumstances. I'll let Commissioner Wiley and.
Jeff Don.
Jeff. I'll let them review those with some of your staff. I'll turn it over to you.
All right, as you said, Jake, this is our ongoing effort to get the loving water supply district funded for this upcoming grant application. The county solicited for engineering services, received two proposals, Jeff and Commissioner Wiley scored those. We've worked with both firms, you know, so, but like this judge said, they're both well qualified. Uh, they've selected for it Prost and Boyd, which is, which is called Falls, which I believe the water supply district has worked with before. And, and as well as us, we've worked with them on several projects and they did a good job. And, uh, we have, uh, done the negotiation for a price, the price they selected, or quoted this was thirty-two thousand dollars, which is more than fair for this project. Uh, we have no qualms about that, that's really a little low for some projects we've seen, so I think that's a very good price. Uh, we have cleared them with TDA, so the next step is to award it to the court of Prost and Boyd, and then we'll get with them, we're gonna get a contract, and we'll start moving forward.
I make a motion. The court of Prost and Boyd, GLLC, is engineering for the water supply.
I'll second that. Thing that I haven't.
I apologize.
I second it, I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay, we're, we're selecting, Culver, Probst and Boyd.
Yes, sir.
GLLC as our engineering.
We'll, we'll get with them, we'll have, we'll get a contract out, and that'll, that'll be, they'll take care of that, and we'll step forward, start going with everything that we have to do because of processing contracts, or I say contract, the grant applications are due. Uh, Austin, I think the seventh of February, so we're, time's starting to get short on us, so we're gonna start poking on everybody.
Okay. We accomplish our purpose here?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we're good.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Uh, aye.
Okay, that's our engineering firm, Culver, Probst and Boyd. For loving water supply project. Item number eight, thank you, Joe, for being here.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank y'all. Consider extension agent Judge Rogers, King Baron, uh, report and request reimbursement, uh, that being five fifty-two sixty-three and five forty-one fifty-five.
Everybody, get that down the road, here, we just slowed it up.
I can't ride that safe, boy, you need to slow down.
Stacy, Robert, the motion, I'll say it.
Roger. Compared to, to approve for us. Uh, reimbursement to, uh, Judge Rogers, King Baron, respecting, all in favor? Your five oh. Okay, Sheriff, you're up. Make note that, first off, we do have contracts that, uh, in the county, Sheriff just got those, I'll execute them, we'll put these on our, uh. Next Thursday, the fourth, uh, agenda for right case.
Forty-five.
She's never. Today's population is fifty-five.
Yes, sir.
And I believe he told me we have three more from Bigger County we picked up this weekend. I'll take them seven four. Have four. He said we have four inmates right now, but I think we have three or four came in this weekend. So seven, two. That's what my understanding was, to get or to take this out.
You have a high juvenile transport as well.
Got a long way to walk.
Yes, sir.
It's the season.
It's a part of.
Two, two of them back and forth.
Yeah.
The transport.
But I'm telling you, he, uh, he's right on top of that, so apparently we just haven't had it come in yet.
Is that a higher number than normal for the month, Governor? PDCJ?
Uh, I. Well, we just, we're working on getting a lot of people out.
So I say, is this a result of working, getting people in?
Exactly, and it's not, I mean, it's just that we're just not getting them, you know, to trial and stuff like that, so. We're not, you know, messing around, trying to get them, keeping here, and we'll get them back over there as soon as possible.
Is that just one or four?
Yes. There's one more, just way over. That was, that was the jail, I'm sorry.
We got.
It's the jail. She is on her way. Should be here. Why don't you tell Chris how it's like that? Oh, well, year and a half.
I didn't even go off, but I'm a little too deep so deaf.
All right, does anybody have any questions on the Joe report?
M H M R department trip.
Everybody sounds okay.
I thought that tree going down was that, not before.
Holiday season.
Holiday season, yeah, really is.
You're right.
It is the season.
You know, that's what I said. Third of our population that we have in there. You're welcome. All right. Calls are down this month, this bid. Still, process is still pretty good. And a lot of traffic stops, we're trying to make sure we slow everybody down a little bit, we seen, had a lot of accidents this month, this last month.
You're slowing the roads back.
Yes, sir. It's a bad accident. Uh, I'm not for sure yet, I haven't, uh, started, I was with, talking to the family, you know, it's out of pocket for four days, and so I haven't.
Sheriff. You tell me why three of you west of the council is a problem, traffic accident?
You know, I don't know if it's really, just now, I mean, to me, it was worse years ago, because people traveling back before Newcastle back, you know what I'm saying?
Alcohol runs?
So now it's not been, I, we don't have as many accidents out there as, I just, it's just a bad one.
Seems to always be a lot of accidents on either side of the bridge, that bridge out there. Animals causing critters.
A lot, a lot of it is just people who are not paying attention. Get distracted.
There are some, there are lots of, there've been lots of critters on the highway.
Well, we had an accident on, you know, three eighty West and Newcastle.
Three eighty West and Castle?
We had an accident there where, uh, pickup hit three or four hogs.
Cause that run out there, right there down the.
About five seventy-eight.
They're terrible.
A lot of it is.
Are animal police signs doing it, do they caution people?
Animals aren't listening.
I know that. I can tell, sometimes I see someone better than I.
That's a good one.
Yeah, knowing our, our speeded signs don't stop anybody either.
I think a lot of, you know, it probably would help, I think, I mean, it makes you aware.
State puts those signs up in a lot of places.
I know, whenever I see a deer sign on the side of the road, I, I start looking.
Click sure now, head to watch.
But you live in this part of the country, you should know at night, there's that possibility.
Probably one fourteen, three eighty, those are the people that transit from far away, right, you know. You don't understand.
And the most of them.
Everybody's in a hurry.
Everybody is in a hurry.
Most of them right there on two fifty-one and three eighty West and Castle, and probably sixty-seven are probably the worst ones we have.
It's still right here, one piece of.
That's one of the biggest problems with all of them.
So, anyway, we, uh, had eight drug arrests.
What's this wax?
I need somebody to answer that. Marijuana, maybe it's a wax pour.
Oh, yeah.
So that you can, they can do whatever you want to do. And that's higher THC. It does have a higher THC in it, and I'm, I'm, I can't tell you.
Okay, it's, it's not good stuff, is it?
But, watch your.
You know, you know.
Educate yourself, go to one Colorado website?
Yeah.
And see what they're selling, they have got hundreds of psychoactive products that they're selling public legally.
Yeah.
And it can't be anything but a problem. And wax is one of them. Stick it in your ear and come up with it.
Those Vader X just passing through the election.
What's that? I haven't.
Those Vader X just passing through.
How many states are you about?
Yeah, a lot of them.
Oklahoma.
Oklahoma, Colorado, two of them.
DPS made a lot over time. Yeah, we have some. Massing through. That's it. Thank you, appreciate it. Rest for us, please.
We had one, one house fire Saturday.
Really, where?
Our German, in Truance.
Christmas related?
No, no, it was.
Hoghouse related?
No.
Where?
German, our jeans, our jeans.
That's just, I heard it.
Yeah, it, it was a heater inside the house, turned over.
Behind the house?
Yeah.
Okay, item number ten, discussed, consider road cross.